Back to order. Rob, could you just wave at me and let me know that we're good to go? Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, welcome back. We are now meeting as Committee of the Whole, and I'll call this meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest between Mary or otherwise? Seeing none, once again, I would ask you to declare if one arises during the course of the meeting. Okay, we're dealing with the consent agenda, folks. Is there anything that needs to be pulled? Seeing none, I will call for a mover to approve the consent agenda as presented by Council Woodbury and seconded by Council Hutchison. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you very much. We're on to item number five, five A. And I've put Savannah on deck. We're dealing with the Sidneyham campus update. I need a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Council Robinson, seconded by Councilor Mill. Savannah, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Good morning, County Council. I'm not alone today. I have with me Courtney Miller, who is our Business Enterprise Manager, and Jennifer Christie, who is the Executive Director for Catapult Gray Bruce. So they are going to join me today to share some really good news with you. Have all the work that's been happening over these past 18 months. As you know, Sidneyham Campus, we were gearing up, ready to go and launch. February 2020 is when we were getting ready to pull the buck back curtain, March 2020. That did not happen. So we had a much extended Phase One, as we will say, but we took that time to do a lot of renovations, to get a lot of site plan work done and make sure that the building would be ready for occupancy when we moved out of the pandemic, and that's where we are today. So over that time, Courtney and Jen through Business Enterprise Center and Catapult Gray Bruce took a lot of time to build that entrepreneurial ecosystem. Because there are a lot of players in our region. We've talked several times around this table about not wanting to duplicate. We want to make sure we're filling the gaps where we can. So that we have the best service delivery available for our businesses to succeed, and that is exactly what they have done. So I do not want to steal their thunder because they are the ones who have done all of this work, and so I'm going to hand it over to Courtney first and then to Jen. Good morning, County Council. Thank you for having us this morning to speak a little bit more about the Business Enterprise Center and Catapult and kind of the relationship we've been building over the last year. So I'm going to speak first a little bit about the operations of the BEC since the beginning of this year. It's been a really busy year. Not really surprised at the pandemic and the supports that have been needed by our small business community. So so far this year, we've had just shy of 600 inquiries come through our center. These have been inquiries from throughout Gray and from businesses in all kinds of situations. We have those in ideation. We have those that are established, those who are going through succession. We've really become kind of that first stop for those businesses where they have an inquiry, which we're really happy about. I have included kind of in my presentation, some of the feedback that we've received from the businesses we've dealt with in the past few months, just to kind of give you an idea of the kinds of businesses that we are dealing with and where they are within their development. So the first business who is mentioned below is a business owner in Own Sound came through our office a couple of years ago, actually, as inquiry, starting a new business, kind of wanted an idea of the fundamentals. From there, we had an ongoing relationship. And then this year, when she hit the pandemic and needed some additional support, came into our office to assist some grant applications, and we were able to help her out with getting some grant funding. So an established business that we had a relationship with, really glad she reached out to us again when she needed some additional support. We've done 119 consultations through our center this year. Consultations tend to be a little bit more in-depth. They're one-on-one. We build ongoing relationship with these clients, and they can be both new businesses and existing businesses, and we really kind of dig into what their needs are as a small business owner and give them the resources through our office and through our partner organizations. So I had another quote there just from a business owner that we had worked with from Durham. Something we often see through our center is trades, professional services, who are very good at their craft, but they haven't had any entrepreneurial training through their schooling. So when it comes to starting their own business, which is very common in those fields, they don't know the fundamentals. So we work with them to kind of set up, and sometimes we have ongoing relationships, and sometimes it is, you know, a one-time meeting in which we're able to answer all their questions, but really happy that we're able to give them that support. Through our contract with the province, we have a requirement to provide a certain amount of training each year to our small business community. So as of the end of October of this year, we provided 27 workshops, which are more training-focused, 11 events, which are more speaker-focused events. And then we had run our summer company and starter company at training programs and awarded 15 grants through those programs. Those grants were awarded to businesses throughout all of Gray. I wanted to speak really quickly about some of the trends we've seen through our center this year and the conversations we're having with small business owners. We've seen a lot of succession happening in the last year. We knew succession was happening in our community. These businesses were transitioning. But what I think has really increased in the last year was the pressure that was put on by the pandemic. So we had those older business owners. It was in their mind that they needed to start the process, but perhaps some of the fatigue that came with the pandemic sped that up. It's been a really wonderful opportunity for young business owners to step into those roles and those established businesses, and it's been nice to work with them through those processes, through that process. We've seen increased referrals from our partner organizations. I think this is coming from a couple of different areas. We've been out in the community more. We've been with Gray County out coming up on four years. So they're, you know, they know that we are here and the supports that we offer. And we have created some groups, which I'm going to speak about as well, just to increase those connections and those relationships with our partner organizations. We've seen a shift in the business models being presented by the businesses that are coming to us. We're seeing them think about pandemic resilience. What does that look like for my business model moving forward? Should there be another pandemic? How do I make sure that I'm not impacted and I don't have to close down operations entirely? And we are seeing them think about workforce. We know that workforce is the biggest challenge for our small business community right now. So we're seeing business models that aren't as reliant on workforce, or if they are, they're building in from day one, the culture that will help them retain and attract. We are seeing tons of relocation, which we knew, and we've known this since the beginning of the pandemic, but we're specifically seeing it in the businesses that we're dealing with that have relocated here. They've either brought their business here and they're reaching out to us to help find connection, or they have moved here and decided to start a small business. We have an entrepreneurship networking group, which I'm going to speak of. And it's interesting when we look around that group, I would say it's safe to say that probably 90% of the people who come to those events are new to the area and looking to make those connections. In coordination with Jen, we launched the Grabers Entrepreneurship Ecosystem. So we have all these partners who we refer back and forth to, but there was no formal way for us all to connect in the past. So we've started meeting quarterly with all of these groups, and it's been a phenomenal opportunity to all get on the same page with what we're offering. So there's no duplication. And when we're looking at our offerings, we're saying, you know, what can we partner on and do together to make that offering stronger for our small business community? It's also allowed us to have direct contact with each organization. So for example, Futurpreneur and BDC are both lending organizations that we refer to regularly, but we didn't have a person there. So I was kind of sending businesses and not giving them that direct handoff, which we know is so important. So now through this group, we have individuals at all of those connections. So we're referring to the individual, but we're also seeing a lot of referrals come back to our center as a result of this for businesses who may not quite be ready to access financing. They need a little bit more work, and that's when we can step in and assist them. Through this group, we have had two initiatives so far. The Wednesday Warm Up, which is the monthly networking group that we've created for entrepreneurs, which has been incredibly successful and heartwarming, and I think fills my cup up more than maybe anything else we do through the center. And then we also launched Small Business Week, which was a week of workshops and events with seven of the partners through the ecosystem, which was really well-received and successful. And one small last piece I wanted to mention while I was here today is our Student Makers Market. So last year, we knew that a lot of students had stayed in the area, not or deferred their post-secondary for a year perhaps, and we knew that a lot of them were running businesses because youth entrepreneurship is so strong within Gray County. So we decided, since we had Sidneyham, we had the space to safely run a market. We would do it and see how it went, and it was really successful, and the students enjoyed it, and they actually requested that we run it again this year. So we were offering the student market again this year. There'll be 20 youth-led businesses, all with handmade products, really quality products, and we're so proud of them for being able to produce. Through this market, we're also doing some training with them to give them some small business fundamentals, but I just wanted to share with you all today, in case you're in the area on the 11th, and you want to come out and support our youth entrepreneurs. So that is all from me today. Happy to ask, answer any questions, and then I can hand it off to Jen from Catapult.
No questions right now. Thank you for that, Courtney. Jen? Jen, I'm just going to ask you to push your button there.
No, there we go. Okay. Good morning, everyone. It's great to see you all again, County Council. I was thinking, it's probably been about two years since the first time I stood up here, but I think it's important to underscore that the work that we've done and some of the highlights I'm going to share have come over really the course of only eight months of work. When you factor in the pandemic and some of the, you know, when I started out, I was working on this part-time, and so there's, I think, a lot of really great milestones, and it speaks to what we can achieve when we work together. So Courtney talked about the ecosystem, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time covering that. I just wanted to hit some of the highlights from my report that was submitted, and I don't have slides, so. One thing on the ecosystem that I think is really important to note and just, I guess, reiterate what Courtney said, some of those contacts like BDC and Futurpreneur. When you apply for those programs, there's very kind of strict criteria as to how they decide who gets them. So you can you can apply online and be auto-approved, or you're not. And why you're not is often, you know, just a very simple thing in your application that you didn't get right. So being able to talk to someone at those organizations to understand what those, you know, key criteria are that might limit an entrepreneur or a company from getting financing is super, super important. So having them in our ecosystem now and familiar with the Gray Bruce area, because they don't physically live here, has been really, really valuable. So since we virtually opened our doors in January 2021 with the mentorship program that we launched in conjunction with the Business Enterprise Center, and thanks to the support of Gray County, we've been able to do a number of things to grow awareness about the ecosystem and to grow awareness about Catapult. So we did host a virtual mentor match with Georgian College, which went over exceptionally well. We've launched a number of communication items, including a monthly newsletter, which is growing monthly with subscribers and is also focusing a lot on sharing information about grant programs that are relevant to our local business community, networking events and knowledge-building events. So there's a lot of resources available right now for entrepreneurs. And as Courtney said, we're trying to fill the gap. So where can we filter that information and share it back out in a way that is quick and easy and gets people what the most important information is they need to know right now? And then, you know, how can we complement and add to that? So we opened our coworking space, the Catapult Crash Pad in October, and you hopefully have received an invite. We're going to have an official grand opening next week. And we've tried to open, this will be our third time. So let's hope that third time is a charm, because we were snowed out the first two times we tried prior to the pandemic, and then obviously the pandemic. So if you if you haven't had a chance to check out that space, hopefully you'll be able to pop in next Thursday during our open house. We'll be there from 10 till 2, and we're going to have a short program around noon to talk about some of the upcoming programs that we have happening. So our room at Sidneyham is open for people to use. I'm working there two days a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And we've got a couple of folks from our entrepreneur community now who have started to also use that space for meetings or just when, you know, they're in the city and they need a place to pop in and meet with somebody or access, you know, internet to be able to do their own meetings. Over the course of this year, so I started full-time in June, but going back to January with the mentorship program, I was meeting with entrepreneurs on a one-on-one basis and being able to refer them to stakeholders, being able to hear out what they're looking for, what their needs are. I've met with 40 entrepreneurs since that time and have been working on building our relationships. So we've developed a great relationship with the Nuclear Innovation Institute over in Saugin Shores and developing our reach into Bruce County, which is really, really great. And coming up next week, something that we're really excited to announce at our grand opening is the Gray Bruce Technology Network will be coming in underneath Catapult. So it will be the Catapult Technology Network, and it will have reach right across Gray and Bruce Counties. We will be working with NII to have a physical presence over on the lake shore and have more robust programming and meetups centered around connecting entrepreneurs and technology professionals in Gray Bruce. So again, Courtney talked about, you know, what are the gaps? And this is a gap that we have heard both from entrepreneurs moving to the community and entrepreneurs who are here, as well as the wider business community. So professionals are moving into the area and they're asking, where is this group? Where is the places that I can connect with other like-minded professionals that are working with technology? So this is a really exciting, exciting development for Catapult and the region. It will be, it will, it will, I believe, connect not only folks who work in technology, but technology goes across all sectors now, right? So there's some really cool conversations and projects about to get underway that are going to link some of our key sectors in Gray and Bruce County with technology kind of as the enabler. So I think it's just the start of things to come by having this network that will provide a place where people can come together and, you know, problem solve and share ideas. And really, this is how innovation happens. And so that's really exciting, and we're going to be announcing that on Thursday at our grand opening. So the only other update is around Fastlane. So you'll recall that in, right, I think, the new year of 2020, right before the pandemic, we purchased the Fastlane license from Innovation Wealth, so we are also almost ready to launch that. So come December, applications will open for businesses that have a minimum $200,000 revenue that are looking to grow to be able to participate in that program. We are going to be able to fund the first phase of it, and then there will be a co-pay arrangement. But it will work out that an entrepreneur will receive upwards of $8,000 worth of consulting support with our consultants and mentors and for a much reduced fee of around $1,700. So a great opportunity. We've got a couple of clients who are interested in this program and will be starting to promote it here in the next couple of weeks. So if you know of any businesses that you think have some really great potential, and there may be struggling, you know, to get up and out of the day-to-day, but looking for, you know, that support to be able to grow their business, to implement, you know, a strong management system, maybe to reach new markets. This is a great program for them. So other than that, I think the only other thing I wanted to mention that I missed on the report was, we also joined Startup Canada. So Gray Bruce is now represented in a national network of entrepreneur and startup communities. So we are called Startup Gray Bruce. Just to add another name and confuse things, but it's a really great opportunity to give exposure to Gray Bruce entrepreneurs on a national stage and also provides us access to export development programming, as well as pitch competitions for startups and entrepreneurs. So really fantastic resource. We hosted a roundtable with a number of entrepreneurs across Gray Bruce a couple of months ago with their government advocacy manager, because they do represent the entrepreneur community to a lot of federal and provincial government stakeholders as well. So again, it's another opportunity for us to make sure that Gray Bruce entrepreneurs are being represented and heard, but I think also rural entrepreneurs, because the challenges, as we all know, are a little bit different and sometimes don't get highlighted at the same, you know, with the same sort of light that the entrepreneurs and our more urban neighbors to the South get. So that's all from me. Thank you very much again for this opportunity. It's so great to be in person. So, thank you.
And they're going to stick around for questions if there are, if there are any for everybody. But two things that I want to point out before I finish the rest of the report. One of the things that makes me so proud with the team that we have built here at Gray is that these two ladies here are entrepreneurs themselves. So when we talk about getting down to business and actually understanding what business owners need, the fact that they have zero time, but they need answers now, and they need that proper handoff, they understand because this is the world they've come from. So that is really, really key. And the other piece is that without this physical space where we can bring people together, we can bring resources together, and we can actually share by knocking on a door or walking down the hall and having a conversation, it doesn't move as quickly. So having Sidneyham has been such an important endeavor to be able to build this entrepreneurial ecosystem and start connecting its networks around the region. Some other exciting information that we've had over the last little while, and it was actually right before I left on my mat leave, is that we signed our agreement with Fed Dev. So after several years of conversation with Fed Dev and looking at what a program at Sidneyham can look like to have that rural support, we signed an agreement for $845,000 with the federal government, and that is providing $500,000 to equipment purchase to build out that maker space in Fab Lab, because we knew Gray County's role is to get the building there, to get the physical space there, but how we filled it after that, we needed more support. So we reached out to the federal government, and they helped us with that. So we haven't bought any equipment yet, because we know industry consultation is key during a pandemic, not the time to bother industry. So now we're starting to pick that up as we hit this recovery phase. And within that dollars, it also provided $345,000 to Catapult to get Fastlane off the ground and to make sure that we have Jen and her supports helping our businesses in that next scale-up piece. So now at Sidneyham, we have from startup to scale up all-in-one building under one roof, which is really exciting, and not a leaky roof, because we fixed those through our capital plan. So it's been excellent. So all of those numbers that we have in there today in this report are what's showing you that it's really working. We're starting to see some significant change. We're starting to see our vision of Sidneyham come to life. The vision that we came to you with, I guess it would be four years ago now, with that original business plan, is still very much attuned to that. But we've seen some significant changes, because we don't have those two anchor tenants that we had planned on originally. And that's why you're seeing the county support in that realm of $150,000 to $200,000 a year, basically to keep the lights on and the snow cleared. If you look at our rising utility costs, if you look at just the building cost itself outside of those absolutely necessary functions, we're not spending any dollars to be able to do what else we really, really wish we could. So it's thanks to those supports of the federal government to help us with that programming and then building those partnerships with a like-minded individual, so that we have the proper supports, but it's not necessarily Gray County always providing that. We know we don't need to be the ones to always provide. We need to be able to pull everyone together and have the right experts in the right room. So that's what we're seeing through Sidneyham. 2022 really truly is the start of Phase Two, which is three years behind almost now, but this is where we see recovery happening. We really positively believe that for economic development, tourism and culture in Gray County, Sidneyham is a top priority to be able to deliver that recovery to our businesses. So you will see a shift through our work planning, through the budget that we will bring back to you for 2022, is that we're looking at those internal secondments of staff time, so that we can clear some work plan off of every one of our staff in economic development and have a very specific focus on Sidneyham, because that's where we want to really make big strides. And I think that we've got the right team to be able to do that. So a big lengthy update for you today, but there's been a lot going on. It's really good work. The numbers are starting to prove themselves. I cannot believe the numbers that you're seeing here. It's just phenomenal. So thank you to you for supporting our team and our department to make sure that we can provide this to businesses, because this is something we know is touching all of Gray County, and we couldn't be more proud to be delivering for you. So thank you so much. And if you have questions, you have all three of us.
Well, thank you very much for that update, Savannah and Courtney and Jen. And I will just say, Savannah, holy mackerel. There's just so much going on there. It's a little bit dizzying, but congratulations to your success. And I would, it's apparent from the presentation by Courtney and Jen that your high energy rubs off. Because it just hits you. And Courtney, that one quote that you provided from, I believe, the physiotherapist who talked about knowing lots about the sort of practical end, but nothing about business, I think that also applies to lawyers. We know a lot about law. We can get out of law school and try to run a business. It's tough. So, Council, questions? Council Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Wow, the enthusiasm is just so contagious, although maybe shouldn't use that word during a pandemic. It just, the enthusiasm just makes you feel so, as a counselor, so inspired. Thank you, ladies, for your presentation. As Winston Churchill might have said, press on. Anyway, the question is succession planning in the ag industry, and in particular, primary production, has always been a bit of a bugaboo. And I'm wondering, have you had any inquiries from primary production, or producers rather, for succession training, succession help? I'm just, I'm wondering if you have any of that. I know traditionally, Omaha or whatever it's called now has sort of filled that role, but they've kind of tailed off over the years, and you wonder what they're doing. But I'm wondering if you ladies have come across any of that, please.
I see Courtney behind me, because this is the expert, so I'm just going to step aside. Thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden. The majority of succession we've seen the last year actually has been bricks and mortar. But in the past, we've seen ag-focused, and we worked with Succession Matching, an organization from the West Coast whose focus actually was in agriculture and joined those partners together. And it's been on my work plan. I'm hoping for next year to loop back with them and see if we can focus on that again, and hopefully loop Philly in as well, because we know that need is there. It's just getting it's just getting it out that that succession matching is available and then giving them the right resources. So definitely something that's on our radar for sure.
Anyone else? I think I saw another hand around here. No? Oh, Council Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And I just want to extend, you know, thanks on behalf of County Council for the work that's being done at Sidneyham Campus. We had the opportunity about a month ago, I guess, for a tour, and I was thoroughly impressed with everything I saw up there and the work that's being done. You know, small business is the backbone of Gray County, and you know, like the Warden said, many small businesses, you know, are maybe a really good mechanic, but when it comes to the business side and, you know, government remittances and everything else that comes along with it, that's where the training maybe lacked a little bit. So just keep up the good work, and I think this was the best investment we've made, you know, as a council in a long time. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, with that said, I thank you folks again for that update. And that brings us to the motion before us. Trying to call the question. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much. Okay, where are we now? We're on item 5B. Mary Lou on deck. We're dealing now with the financial update and year-end projection as of September 30th, 2021. I need a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Council Hutchison, seconded by Council Keveney. Mary Lou, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. So I am, this is my first time counting councils. So good morning, County Council. This is going to be a hard one to follow, but I'm here today to present to you the year-end projections for the month ending September 30th. Before I want to start, I do want to thank everyone in this room, as well as finance, staff and managers who have helped pull this report together. This report truly is a team effort. Covers a lot of departments, and I'd just like to thank them for helping me learn all about Gray County in the few short months I've been here. This report provides some dialogue on each functional area, hitting the highlights of significant items in the respective budgets. Attached to the report is a numerical summary broken down into operating and capital budgets. Staff are projecting an operating deficit of $728,800 and a capital surplus of $753,000 for an overall combined surplus of $24,200. Put this in perspective, the total levy raised at Gray County is $62.3 million, so this surplus represents a 0.04% of the levy. For individual highlights within the report, in the Administration Department, we are projecting a $69,500 operating surplus, and this is projected largely due to the result of staffing vacancies and changes, reductions in staffing, conferences and travel, et cetera. And this is projected largely due to the result of staffing vacancies and changes, reductions in staffing, conferences and travel, et cetera. Investment income is projected to end the year with a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar deficit. But this will not result in a shortfall as the transfer to reserve will be reduced to offset this. The IT capital budget is estimating a shortfall of approximately six thousand dollars. And there is a surplus of sixty thousand, two hundred in the council department as a result of virtual meetings and lower expenses for travel, meals and accommodations. Information services, as mentioned previously, this budget is implicitated to have savings that will be used to offset the IT capital budget. And after this is taken into account, it's it's expected to have a two thousand surplus. In the weekly indemnity and workers' compensation, both of these budgets are self insured plans. Human resources staff calculates premiums to be charged out to departments based upon best estimates and historical trends. These sources of revenue pay a cost of these plans and the weekly indemnity budget is expected to have a forty-three thousand one hundred dollar surplus if claim numbers and costs remain consistent with first half of with the first quarter, three quarters of the year. The WSIB is projected to have a deficit of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. And the number of claims and duration of these claims as well as projections for the remainder of the year have resulted in this estimate. If considering weekly indemnity and workers' compensation together, the projection is a shortfall of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars. And this shortfall could be funded from their respective reserves of which their balances are fifty thousand and three point one million. In the assessment budget, costs from impact will be on budget. In provincial offenses, we estimate a deficit of approximately seven thousand, seventy-three thousand, one hundred dollars after cost sharing with Bruce County. We are see, they are seeing a ticket revenue uh decrease that's trending to be less than expected. Their ticket volume is eight hundred and seventy-nine tickets lower than uh September thirtieth of last year. This department has also seen other savings from not being open to the public, but offset by a higher mailing and form costs. The health unit, Markdale Hospital and Commitment to Jordan College are expect will be on budget by end of year. Um during the last couple of years, Gray County has received safe free start and provincial COVID recovery. Over between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, the county has received approximately four point three million dollars between these two streams. And at the beginning of twenty twenty-one had three point nine million available. We are estimating that one point nine million will be spent by the end of twenty twenty-one, leaving us with approximately two million dollars available for our twenty twenty budget to offset COVID related operating expenses. Property, as we are anticipating a surplus of twenty-three thousand in our property area. And this is anticipate, this is based on the results of staffing changes and savings and maintenance costs with the administration building close to the public. The capital budget is estimated to have a six thousand dollar shortfall as a result of unbudgeted heating and cooling repairs. Taxation and grants, based on preliminary communications we've had with our lower tiers. With our admitted supplemental taxation and write offs, we are expecting this budget to be balanced by year end. Planning is anticipating to have a surplus of twelve thousand dollars based on increased application revenue received to date. Capital projects are expected to be on budget. Agriculture is expecting an operating surplus of four thousand dollars and as Beaver and Coyote Grant expenditures are expected to be lower than budgeted. Foresteries and trails. Anticipated to have balancing operating budgets at year end. They did, their forest festival was canceled in twenty twenty-one as a result of the pandemic, and this is being recommended that we transfer this five thousand dollar budget item into to be used in twenty twenty-two. And they also received a Canada Healthy Communities Initiative Federal Grant of twenty-five thousand, which has been received subsequent to the budget approval, which is being used for additional forest trail improvements. And you will see in the twenty twenty-two budget that we are going to be combining our forestry and trails department into one one department extra, so that will look a little different for you next year. Economic development and tourism. Projection operating budget deficit of seventeen thousand, five hundred and a balanced capital budget. This can be attributed to higher than expected hydro costs and slightly higher costs for the gray road for community transportation route, which is not covered by grant funding. Gray Roots is projecting an operating surplus of hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred after taking into account the use of twenty-two thousand to assist in funding for the construction of the general store. This surplus can be attributed to savings from staffing changes, reduced cleaning costs and the postponement of the traveling exhibit. The capital budget is anticipated to have a twenty-two thousand dollar deficit as the general store will be funded through operational surpluses mentioned above. In social services, in Ontario Works, overall, the Ontario Works and employment support projects is surplus of a hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred. The caseload is three hundred and fifty-four cases less than anticipated and is attributed to the Canada Recovery Benefit or which is expected. It is expected the caseload will increase once the CRB ends. Children's Services has supported frontline workers in providing care to school age children in twenty twenty-one was with an estimated cost of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred. Fee subsidy savings will be directed to support operators and home childcare providers with increased costs as a result of COVID. And as a result, the Children's Services Budget projects a twenty-one thousand, five hundred surplus with a total projected surplus for Social Services Department totaling two hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred. In the housing apartment is projecting an overall deficit of two hundred and fifty-two thousand with two hundred and eighty thousand deficit in housing operations and a twenty-eight thousand surplus in nonprofit housing. This is the result of short shortfall in tenant revenue estimated to be seventy thousand as well as a hundred and forty-five thousand and utilities being over budget due to timing of accruals in twenty twenty and insurance expenses overages of a hundred and five thousand due to increasing rates combined with updated insured values of properties. These overages are slightly offset by approximately fifteen thousand dollars of savings between various property maintenance expense lines. The capital budget is on target with some projects rebudgeted into twenty twenty-two as a result of COVID and tender results. In long term care, the projected year on cert results for the long term care development were discussed in the financial report for the Long Term Care Committee of Management on November twenty-third. Operating budgets for the three care homes have combined projected shortfall of eight hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred dollars and will be offset by capital surpluses of ninety-seven thousand, resulting in an overall year end deficit position of seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred. After offsetting three hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred through safe restart funding for COVID related expenses. The remaining deficit of three hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred will be funded by long term care home reserves. The overall themes in the long term care home affecting these deficits are reduction of revenue due to loss of five temporary beds, reduction in the case mix index, CMI funding and preferred revenue and increased expenses in raw food and salaries. Paramedic services is projected to have a deficit of operations of approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand with a hundred and twenty thousand deficit in land ambulance, the nine-one-one side services and a fifteen thousand deficit in community paramedicine services. And based on current projections, the nine-on-one side will be funded fifty-three percent by the county and forty percent, forty-seven percent from the county in twenty twenty-one. Increased cost for fuel, insurance and a few significant vehicle and stretch repairs, professional fees and uniform costs are the primary factors for this projected shortfall. Paramedic services is projected to incur approximately four hundred and sixty-eight thousand of COVID related expenses in twenty twenty-one. At this time of the report, the province has provided a hundred and twenty-seven thousand of COVID relief funding and has not indicated what additional funding will be provided. It is anticipated the province will provide funding for all paramedic service COVID nineteen related expenditures. But if specific funds are not provided by the province, these expenses will be offset by safe restart funding. The capital budget is on target. Cap ambulances were ordered early in the year and delivered early has been delayed as a result of COVID with hopefully we'll see them in early two one twenty-two. The transportation services provides a projects a thirty-seven thousand, four hundred operating budget deficit from fuel costs, increased vehicle and equipment cleaning protocols and a review of the domes. These costs are being offset by savings from staffing changes. The capital budget is estimated to have a six hundred and ninety thousand dollar surplus from projects that were tendered early in the year and is offset by the unbudgeted repairs to the domes this year. That's all I have to report today, so I can take any questions you may have now.
Thank you very much, Sue, and I apologize for not introducing you properly at the beginning. I had Mary Lou in my head. Um counsel, are there any questions? Counselor Silver?
Yes, um so we're we're showing some significant um shortfalls in in a couple of areas. And um but back a while ago, when the province asked for applications for phase two COVID funding, we didn't apply on the basis that we didn't have any need. So um my question is, um perhaps we should wonder why, why we didn't foresee these needs and apply for that funding. I know um Simcoe County got substantial funds. I know um we applied at the Blue Mountains. We got some funds and I'm just wondering what we can approve so that, you know, when opportunities like this come up in the future that we do apply for the funding in time.
Thank you, sir. I know that this question was asked previously and an answer was given by our C A O at the time. I'll turn to her. Mary Lou, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Originally, we did not apply for the additional funding. You had to demonstrate that you had unmet needs. And as we are still sitting with uh between the two funding streams for COVID, um we could not demonstrate that we didn't have adequate funds. As Sue mentioned, we have funds that we're still sitting with projected at the end of twenty twenty-one um using for twenty twenty-two and the way it looks currently, we would still have a bit of money left at the end of twenty twenty-two.
Anything further, Counselor Silver?
So um would we not be able to transfer those funds to to pay for the the long term care uh shortfall? Cause obviously quite a bit of that would be due to COVID measures.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and the answer to Counselor Silver. We are going to use um funds from the safe restart that um when we review the financial statements and the areas that um would be appropriate to use um safe restart such as the loss of the five beds that were considered temporary, the additional raw food, et cetera. That's all been taken into account on the projection. Um there were other areas that we did not feel um were appropriate to use safe restart.
Any other questions? Counselor Bondi?
Thank you very much, Warden Hicks. Uh I'm I'm calculating now. I realize this is not the final, but uh on twenty-four thousand dollars uh that you you, you know, you're off the budget by twenty-four thousand dollars. And that's pretty disappointing. That is four one hundredths of one percent that you've missed that budget by, and I I wish you'd do better. That's great. That's pretty impressive. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Can anyone do better now? With that said, then, thank you very much, Sue and Mary Lou. It's time to call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you very much. Run to item number six. Do we have any, excuse me, other business? Seeing none. We're on to item number seven. Any notices of motion? Do not see any. We're on to item number eight now. Thank you for that brief indulgence. It's now time for the item eight, the Warden's closing address. So I will turn to that. Webster's Dictionary defines the word resilient as able to become strong, healthy or successful again after something bad happens. County Council, staff, visitors, virtual viewers and members of the media. It has been three hundred and sixty days since my inauguration. On that day, a day that's usually marked with some ceremony, this place was locked down. We were nine months into dealing with a world pandemic and only Deputy Warden McQueen and I were permitted entrance to this building. My wife and daughter observed the proceedings virtually from our car out in the parking lot. Now take that in for a second. I started off with the word resilient because over the past year, we have had to be exactly that. For most of this year, our staff were working from home and on the occasions when I came to this facility, you could literally hear a pin drop. Nevertheless, showing tremendous grit, our C A O, her talented senior management team and all of the staff at Gray County came through in a big way for the residents of our great county. In a moment, I'll highlight some of the accomplishments over the last year. And I'm certain that at the conclusion of that highlight, you will agree with me that we have had one of our most productive years ever. For now, I want to take the opportunity to acknowledge the tremendous effort and success of our C A O, Kim Wingrove, her senior management team and all the staff at Gray County. On December first, twenty twenty, in a speech I delivered for reelection, I told you that if elected, I would be inviting this council to make a bold move on the issue of affordable housing. Well, you responded in a big way. With your support, here's what we accomplished in the area of afforded affordable housing over the last year. At the start of the year, council created the Affordable Housing Development Fund and endorsed a one percent annual, not one time, but annual contribution to the levy to be dedicated specifically to address affordable housing. In year one of the fund, the contribution was in excess of one point one million dollars. That, my friends, was a bold decision by this council. It is this, it is a decision that will have a meaningful impact on the affordable housing crisis in our community and will mark our legacy. In addition to managing one thousand units of affordable housing over the last year, we implemented a coordinated access system for those experiencing homelessness in partnership with Bruce County. The system connects people with housing and much needed supports for maintaining housing with a goal of ending the cycle of homelessness. We allocated additional funds for staffing to support Canadian Mental Health Association, Y M C A Housing and Safe and Sound to assist people experiencing homelessness. Our out of the cold program provides emergency housing by utilizing blocks of motel units. An additional eleven units of transitional housing through nonprofit operators will be available next month. Council also uh just recently approved moving forward with the purchase of a building in Owen Sound to develop ten to twelve more supportive housing uh units. The county supported uh the county supported Odawa Heights Project is expecting occupancy of sixty units this April. And lastly, we have committed three million dollars to support Lutheran Social Services with an affordable housing thirty-two bed build in Owen Sound for seniors. So while we've had a lot of work, while we have a lot of work to do in the area of affordable housing, we can take pride this council's commitment and success over the last year. So turning next to truth and reconciliation. This year, we established a mutual friendship commitment with Moikwadon Indigenous Friendship Center. In February, we passed our land acknowledgement policy and the spirit of truth in the spirit of truth and reconciliation. And we mark National Day for Truth and Re- Reconciliation. We can't talk about twenty twenty-one without addressing COVID nineteen. I spent a full year as Warden in a declared state of emergency for the pandemic. Where, by the way, we still remain. Where, by the way, we still remain. Staff from a number of departments were quick to volunteer in support of the Hockey Hub Vaccination Centers. Gray County staff started returning to the office in the late summer and early fall. We continue to offer remote services, uh, service delivery to clients who need our support and want to access services in that way. COVID nineteen continues to impact our services and our budgets, but nevertheless, we continue to deliver vital services to the public. Staff in frontline healthcare services have done an exceptional job adapting to the ongoing changes as have staff in all departments. To varying degrees. It's important to know and acknowledge that we experienced no facilities from COVID in any of our three long term care homes. Let me repeat that. We experienced no fatalities from COVID in any of our three long term care homes. For that, please join me in acknowledging the leadership of our Director of Long Term Care, Jennifer Cornell, and the great work of all our long term care staff. Our paramedics played a proactive role in COVID in the COVID nineteen pandemic, supporting public health with the rollout of vaccines to homebound residents. They supported other regions of the province such as Windsor when that need, um, support was needed. They also made a significant impact through the pandemic outreach program. I want to specifically acknowledge our paramedics for the role they played in responding to the rooming house crisis in Hanover this year. I can't tell you how many times over the last year I've had community partners, including Dr. Era. Call or write me to express gratitude for the role our paramedics played in the response to COVID nineteen. Please join me in acknowledging the great work of our Director of Paramedic Services, Kevin McNabb, and all of Gray County's paramedics. Turning next to Gray Roots, we reopened our doors and welcome visitors back to the museum. We have adjusted to COVID nineteen protocols and it's clear that the public appreciates this outlet. Construction of the general store has kicked off and is well underway. I could have said we're hammering away at completing that project, but that would have been a little, sorry. In the area of climate change, we hired a full time climate change coordinator and have been developing the Climate Change Action Plan and engaging with the public. We have a draft climate change action plan in place that will help Great County reduce greenhouse gas emissions and improve energy efficiency. While delivering benefits to the community. We held community consultations this fall to get feedback on the plan and we are analyzing what we heard and we'll be reporting back shortly. Turning next to community transportation, the gray transit route is rolling. Get it? Rolling. Our ridership is increasing. We continue to optimize our schedules based on rider trends and feedback. And you'll recall at the very beginning of this term of council, we identified transportation as a high priority. It's great to see this project cruising along. Sorry. I try. Next, we'll turn to long term care. We've taken major steps forward this year in the planning and design of the new Rockwood Terrace Facility. We are on schedule to meet our two thousand and twenty five deadline. A project manager, manager, excuse me, and a prime consultant are now in place to support the development process. Gray County is developing a behavioral support transitional unit at Gray Gables. This area of the home will provide much needed specialized support to individuals with responsive behavior. And will help create capacity in our local hospitals. Our designated care partner, uh, the brainchild, by the way, of our Director of Long Term Care was a tremendous success. And I dare say copied by the province for implementation across the province. This next item deserves a heading on its own. I'm talking about the very exciting news announced recently with the Minister of Colleges and Universities in attendance. Uh, that commencing in two thousand and twenty two, our partner, Georgian College, will be delivering. A full four year nursing bachelor of science degree program. Gray County has played a pivotal role in advocating for this program because it will go a long way in addressing the nursing shortage in our area. Our partnership with Georgian College did not end with advocacy. As you all know, this council committed one million dollars to support renovations to the new nursing wing at Owen Sound Campus of Georgian College. In the area of economic development, we continue to hear from businesses that they're feeling the pressure of COVID nineteen and labor shortages. Our staff have continued, uh, supporting businesses through our support hotline all year and have been keeping them aware of available supports. We have hosted our first, second and third virtual job fairs this year with partners, uh, to safely help employers connect with skilled candidates. Council supported the settlement strategy, uh, developed through the Gray Bruce Local Immigration Partnership. Uh, Sittenham Campus, which you just heard about phase one launched this year, and we are the only municipality. To receive federal funding for a skills, training, trades and innovation center. That's pretty impressive. Catapult Gray, as you heard, has been launched. Get it? Catapult. Launched. I want to talk next about our recreation and outdoor spaces. It was another busy year for day trippers in our area. We formed an outdoor management group with partners at local trail organizations and conservation authorities and municipalities. Ambassadors were deployed during the busy season to ensure our natural assets were not overwhelmed. When appropriate, visitors were redirected to alternative spaces and encouraged to visit our downtowns. We also promoted responsible tourism through social media platforms. Counselors, however, and body joined me when Gray County hosted the Great Lakes Waterfront Trail, uh, tour adventure on August thirty first. At that event, we hosted participants from across the country and community, uh, community and political leaders joined the celebration. Dignitaries included the Honorable Lisa MacLeod, Minister of Heritage, Sport, Tourism and Culture Industries. MPP Bill Walker, Simcoe County Warden George Cornell, Collingwood Mayor Brian Saunders and others. In addition to the events, participants made a five hundred dollar donation to the Gichi Nimmikwadon Reconciliation Garden. Which, by the way, just last week received a peace medal from the Gray Bruce YMCA. In the area of road construction, I will simply say that this year we have committed more than seventeen million dollars into improving county roads. Through construction and resurfacing, infrastructure work and pothole repair. Broadband. This year, we started seeing swift projects activated in our area. Our advocacy has paid off with the province as we are seeing further significant broadband investments to the tune of four billion dollars being planned for the future. There was the very exciting announcement this year, right here in Gray County. Of a low orbiting satellite internet project through telesat in Allen Park in West Gray. The Hanover Owen Sound Task Force Report will be coming out next month. Members of that body will know that a lot of work has gone into the production of that report and the action plan. Our Affordable Housing Task Force approved an updated housing plan in February. And our social services department is adjusting to changes because of a social services modernization plan implemented by the province. This could be very exciting as we see our social services workers return to a more traditional role of supporting clients with a range of needs. So there you have it. Our third year is now completed. I'm sure that you will agree after hearing all of that, that despite unprecedented challenges, we have had a very, very successful year. Looking forward. We are entering our fourth and final um, year of the term. It should be an interesting year. As we will have elections at both the provincial and municipal levels. A special thank you goes out to my mayor, Counselor Patterson. Sue picks up the slack brought about by having a member of her council serving as warden. In my inaugural speech, I told you that I would work to strengthen the relationship between the warden's office and the office of our local MP and MPP. I'm happy to report that during the last year, I have had weekly meetings with our MP, Mr. Uh, Mr. Ruff. And our MPP, Mr. Walker on COVID related issues. That's weekly. Additionally, I have had quarterly meetings with these gentlemen where I get to set the agenda. I want to extend sincere gratitude to Mr. Walker and to Mr. Ruff for their generosity of time and frankly, for their friendship. I also want to thank MPP Lisa Thompson, who hosted regular meetings as well over the last year that I was invited to attend. A huge thank you goes out to Dr. Era, our medical officer of health. He has been nothing short of outstanding. I have had personal calls with Dr. Era at all times of the day, night and on weekends. His intellect, compassion and hard work is off the charts. Get it? Sorry. I've learned so much about leadership from Dr. Era. Please join me in thanking Dr. Era. In closing, yes, I am closing. I want to extend my love and gratitude to my wife Barbara and our four children. As always, none of this would have been possible without you. The last word goes out to you, County Council. I want to thank the members of this uh, body for all the work that you do in support of of the people of this great county. I also thank you for permitting me the privilege of serving as your warden. I truly hope that my performance has met or exceeded your expectations. Thank you. Looking for my. Wrong one. Yeah, got it. Uh, with council's permission, I wonder if we, you might permit me to ask Counselor Mill and Counselors Columbus to. Uh, move in second if they're willing, uh, adoption of the warden's closing address. Would you be willing? Thank you for that. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, then I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. So now I'll turn things over to our clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And at the end of your term here, I'd like you to invite you uh, to the podium along with the past warden Millen for the presentation of your warden's pin.
Warden Hicks, I want to uh, present you with your warden's pin for two thousand and twenty one with a great deal of gratitude and pride. You've done a tremendous job. And I think we can all agree that uh, it has been a challenging year, but as you just outlined, it has been a very successful year as well. In no short measure because of your leadership and your talent to seek out people with talents and. Thank you very much, sir. I want to present you with this. If you don't mind, I'll try not to draw blood. There we go. There you go, sir. Congratulations.
Okay, so the last item left is a motion to adjourn. I see Counselor Gamble and Counselor Little. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you very much for adjourn.